The April 23rd special meeting of the Board of Selectmen will come to order. As we are following the guidelines for social distancing, I just wanted to say that I'm here in Town Hall along with Stacy Haspel and the other members of the Board of Selectmen are joining via phone. Just to confirm for the record, June Strunk, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, and Dev Downey?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful, thank you. I'd also want to welcome anyone who might be joining us from Facebook Live. Thanks for tuning in for our Board of Selectmen meeting on this fine cold gray day in April. And again, just another reminder, please, everyone stay muted while you're on the call until you need to speak. So that's great. We know this always gives a little bit of kickback and delay, but we thought it's nice to still keep doing the pledge of allegiance. So if you guys wouldn't mind joining me in the pledge, thank you. The pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation-
Under God-
Under God-
Indivisible-
Indivisible-
With liberty-
With liberty-
And justice- Thank you, guys. Okay, so let's get started. So could I get a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of March 25th, 2020, and April 16th, 2020?
Don't move.
Thank you, Dev. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
This is June and I second the motion.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have no corrections.
Wonderful.
I have no comments either.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is correspondence. And I wanted to let you guys know, we got another application. This one from Kristen Clark, who's interested in serving on the Public Communications Ab-Hoc Committee. So again, when times are a bit better, we'll try and formalize that committee and get them to meet. And we'll have some good work, I think, to share with them of what's worked and what maybe hasn't, that we've been trying out during this time. Then, the next item on the agenda is an appointment to the Rec Commission. Could I hear a motion to appoint Stephanie Kendall Hartlet- Hartel, sorry, Hartel- as an alternate to the Rec Commission?
Don't move.
Do I hear a second?
This is June and I second the motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No.
No, no discussion.
All right, great. And just to say, we did check with the Chair of the Rec Commission, and he was in favor of this. So I think this will be a good addition. Hearing all those, hearing no opposition, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. All right, so another exciting update. This is going to be for us to appoint the new Director of Economic and Community Development, our long-awaited position. So this, just to give background for anyone who's interested or wants to know why we're doing this at a Board of Selectmen meeting. Pursuant to Chapter 8, Section 8.1 of the Town Charter, directors must be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So we completed an extensive search for the Director of Economic and Community Development position, and we received a number of talented and highly qualified applicants. We conducted virtual interviews with a panel of both Chairs of different Boards and Commissions, as well as Town Hall staff. And it decided that Susan Cullen stood out across all categories. She's coming to us after 21 years with the Town of Brown's Office of Planning and Development. She's in the region, known as a top grant writer. And she also has extensive experience in the areas of both economics and community development. She resides in town and has also been a member of our Architectural Design Review Board. And she's an Assistant Scout Master with Boy Scout Troop 9. So she will start on May 4th. And we're just really excited to welcome her onboard and very, very needed assistance for both internal staff, myself included, and the town. And I know Keith, who's on the line too, is also looking forward to getting started, because she'll be in his department. So we're pretty excited about that. So I would like to get a motion to formally appoint Susan Cullen as the Director of Economic and Community Development.
This is Debbie, don't move.
Do I hear a second?
June's having audio problems.
Oh.
June might have lost sound.
Yeah, June lost her-
June lost her audio? Okay, so we'll-
We don't need the third person?
Oh, we don't need the third person, okay. June, hopefully June will be able to get her audio back, but we can still pass this?
Yeah, so she motioned, so you second the motion?
I will second the motion. So now we have a- Oh, hello?
Hi, this is June.
Oh, wonderful.
Hi.
Okay. So Dev made a motion to appoint Susan Cullen as the Director of Economic and Community Development. And do we have a second?
Oh, I second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Do you guys have any discussion?
Uh, no, I'm just really excited that she's going to be coming to join us. Looking forward to working with her.
Me too. All right, wonderful. So here, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, wonderful. The motion carries, very exciting.
Um- Before we go on to the next item, can you hear me through my computer and the phone? Do I need to shut down my computer, or did I lose my internet? I'm not sure what happened with my meeting.
You sound perfect, so whatever you're doing works.
Okay, all right.
Just keep it all going, just in case. Um- We're a ragtag team, but we're getting it done. So just a quick update on COVID. Just to let you guys know, we have been, we do have about three calls a week with different people at the state level, including the Governor and a number of people on his team, at least each week. And it's been, isn't really helpful, and I think there aren't huge updates since last time, except, you know, they're really working hard on new partnerships to get more testing in place. They like the projections they're seeing. You know, we're still hopeful and working towards the idea that by the end of May, he'll be making announcements and releasing some plans in terms of reopening the economy. But just to reiterate, you know, we still have active cases, it's still growing in Stonington. Eastern Connecticut isn't expected to still hit its peak for another few weeks. So I mean, if we keep doing what we're doing, we kind of stay, stay social distancing, we wear the masks. So you guys can't see, but I am wearing the mask, but Stacy's in the room with me. You know, I think we can keep this positive trajectory going, and then hopefully, once we reopen, we can stay open. So we'll see, but I'll share any big updates we get along the way. But since our last conversation, there's really no kind of big, big updates. I would just reiterate to anyone who's listening on the phone or on Facebook Live, we are trying to keep things updated on the town website, as well as on social media. But in particular, on the town website, we have both a COVID update with a number of relevant links to state data that keeps changing, and new recommendations, and executive orders that come out daily. So please do check in there. And we also have the First Selectmen Blog, which is broken down more by thematic areas. So we have things on community connections, health and wellness, mental health, food, and business resources, and a number of other areas. And just in addition, if anybody, including you guys on the phone, have suggestions for other topics we should be exploring or looking at COVID or non-COVID related, let us know, because we're trying to do at least weekly different thematic updates there as well. But those are my big COVID updates. Any questions from you guys, or updates on your end, things you're hearing or seeing?
No, I don't have any update. I mean, I get all the, you know, we get all the executive orders and announcements, and so... I thought I had heard something about homeschooling ending at the end of May, but I wasn't sure if that meant that schools were going to close earlier, or schools were going to go back to school. And it was a half of a conversation, so...
Yeah, I think as far as we know officially, there's no decision yet. But they should be making a decision in the next few weeks. So we'll see, yeah. I know Massachusetts announced that no one would be going back to school, so...
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if nothing else, we'll move on to new business. And that's why Keith's on the line. Thank you, Keith, for joining over the call. So this item is about the Affordable Housing Plan. And it's a planning grant and resolution. And Keith, our town planner, is on, so he can give us an update. Both an overview of the grant, as well as a little bit about the resolution that we can submit and sign off, so that way the grant can be sent in. So Keith, do you want to give an update for us?
Sure. We're looking to apply for a $50,000 grant from the Department of Housing for the creation of an affordable housing plan. As part of this, we're also proposing to kick in $8,000 of our department's own funds as a match, for one thing, to make the plan go a little bit farther. So we're looking to get the Selectmen's, okay, in the form of a certified resolution to allow us to apply for the grant. The program on the state level does still need the State Bond Commission's approval. So in light of the financial situation, we're hoping that this money will materialize. But the application is an easy lift for us in-house to do. And we feel that planning for affordable housing is still an important goal in light of the economic problem that a lot of residents are going through now. And, you know, the affordable housing crisis in the region and state is, may only be getting worse. So hopefully, this is something that we can tackle over the next few months if this money becomes available.
Thank you so much, Keith. I fully agree. So maybe, could I get a motion to approve the Affordable Housing Plan, including the planning grant and resolution?
This is Debbie, don't move.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, this is June and I second the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for Keith?
This is June, I have a question. So will this include affordable housing for seniors, or is it just across the board for anyone?
Well, it would, it would be a holistic look at affordable housing policy in town, which would include seniors also, but it would look at everything.
Okay.
Oh, this is Debbie, I have a question. So this is something that if we get the grant, Keith, then you'll work on to kind of look at needs and possible solutions based on our specific town situation?
Right, right. We use the money to hire a consultant to develop a plan for us. And they look at the needs we have, so the shortcomings out there, and look at everything involving housing policy, whether it's the construction of new units, protection of naturally occurring affordable housing units out there, how to keep affordable units affordable. And also look at land use regulations that may or may not be getting in the way of affordable housing in town.
Thank you. This is June, I have another question. So the 2020 census, is that, so that's key? I mean, I'm assuming that that kind, that data would be key to understanding the population that may need affordable housing? Or is there another measure that we can get the percent of our residents that would benefit for something like this?
You know, the 2020 census results would be, would be helpful. I'm not sure that they'll be out in time to help with this, it depends what the timeframe is.
Okay.
If not, we just have to use whatever information we have and whatever projections are out there to help fill in the gaps.
And just to add, June, it's like, I know LeAnn and her Department of Human Services have a really good handle on people in need in the community and kind of what the housing shortage looks like. But of course, the census is key, and we'll talk about that a little bit later again. So thanks for bringing it up. But I think, I think LeAnn's department would also be involved if we can get this help to come in to really do a deeper dive and explore all this.
So we kind of have our own census that's far more updated and accurate with respect to Stonington.
Yeah, in a lot of ways, because, yeah, we have a great human-
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Human services department.
Yep, all right. Okay.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Keith, or Keith, anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, thank you very much.
Okay, great. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Thank you, Keith, you're welcome to stay on, but I know you're busy, so you also don't have to.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
So the next item is something that we've actually already approved for the most part, but we, the dates changed, so just to be official, we wanted to re-approve them. So the first one is a request from the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce for the 22nd Annual Duck Race in Donahue Park. And that has been rescheduled to Saturday, June 27th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve the request?
This is Debbie, don't move.
Do I hear a second?
This is June, I second the motion.
All right, a motion, a second, any discussion?
Nope.
Nope. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. The next item is also for use of the Donahue Park, but for this time from St. Michael's School for their 11th Annual 5K Fun Run Walk on Saturday, October 10th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve the request?
This is Debbie, don't move.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Yes, this is June, I second the motion.
All right, any discussion?
Nope.
Nope. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then finally, the use of the 4th District Voting Hall at 49 North Boynton Road Parking Lot. So there's, sorry, for both of those locations. So this is, as a reminder, we just recently voted on this, but it's the Wooden Boat Show, which has now been rescheduled to August 12th through the 16th. And they are requesting use of both of these, both of these parking lots. Do I hear a motion to approve the request?
This is Debbie, don't move.
Do I hear a second?
Uh, this is June and I second.
All right, yes. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just asked, so I don't have the original one in front, but in front of me. Is the parking needed from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.? Was that part of the original, or is that an added?
It's part of the original.
It's part of the original.
Oh, it's part of the original, okay. So let's see, there's a little green asterisk next to it, so I wasn't sure if that was something that was added in this. So the only thing that's different is the date?
It should just be the date.
Okay. I just want to say, I'm very happy that there's optimism out there with rescheduling these events.
I know, it is, yeah. It's hopeful.
So, we're going to have a very busy, fingers crossed, end of summer and September and October, so...
Hopefully.
It's fine.
Okay.
Good.
Dev, anything from you?
Um, commenting? No, no, no comment.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. So the next item, we don't have to discuss this much, but I just wanted to be sure we could at least touch on it, since we didn't get to do anything for Earth Day, you know, all together or in person yesterday. But I was really excited that some of our previous conversations and discussions about kind of the Sustainable CT Program and how we could take that on started to kind of come and come together. We had also been planning a Greener Garden event that was supposed to take place in partnership with Human Services, when they do their nonprofit kind of Spring Fest there. And obviously, all that has had to be kind of postponed. So we were, we were excited to be able to kind of officially launch Sustainable Stonington. We'd love ideas. If you guys know of interested people in the community, you know, some people have said it'd be great to have even like a little logo for it, as well as identifying what projects using a Sustainable CT excel, because they have such an extensive list as a great starting point. But clearly, people in the community might have other thoughts or ideas, or ways to take these projects and what directions. But we are really excited to use the Pollinator Pathway Program as the first place to start. And just a big thank you, there was a few residents who had shared ideas and thoughts on this. And then in particular, Noreen Keppel had offered her assistance, even, you know, if people call or email and want guidance on, you know, their specific garden, she offered to do kind of virtual feedback for them. So I think it'll be a great thing to get started on. We'll also try and reach out to a lot of the garden clubs and to other nonprofits in the area who are already doing this work, or that can share their examples and experience, and also others who might want to expand on it. So we've already heard from Stone Acres and Avalonia and a few others. So we're excited to kind of keep, keep working on this. But yeah, just really excited, just to reiterate, you know, I think it was really fitting for this time right now, because it's something that can be done for, you know, really inexpensive. You know, a box of seeds is a few dollars, a little bit of legwork, and you can have a pollinator pathway right in your yard. And the other key part is, you know, not using any pesticides or synthetic fertilizers. But we know a lot of local businesses offer other options and guidance on this. So shouldn't be too hard, but can make a really big impact. So we're excited. On the website, we also have an email set up where people can send questions. And just finally to add, we're excited when Susan Cullen gets started, we'll share the Sustainable CT kind of program spreadsheet with her and work with her to see, you know, where she might be able to help us coordinate on different areas. And then, you know, it'll be a great way, I think, also for her to get to know other staff members and other Board and Commission members. Because as we saw with that program, there's linkages to so many other areas of work that are already taking place in town. So it'll be great to kind of get, you know, a really good overview of what we've already done, what we are doing, and what we can continue to do. So, and Jason Vincent, before he left, had already done a great job updating a spreadsheet and putting in information to Sustainable CT. And we hope when the certification program rolls around for August, we'll be able to become an actually certified town. So that'll be, I think, exciting also. But I'd love to hear from you guys, any thoughts or questions or ideas, or, you know, we can also obviously talk more about this in the coming weeks.
Uh, no, this is Debbie. Go ahead, June, just for first.
Yeah, no, no, Dev, go ahead, it's fine, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I was so excited that this announcement could come out on Thursday. And I, you know, actually shared it a few places and forums that I'm in that we were talking about Earth Day, because it is like such a grand, simple thing that's such a great way to get started. And I think it's a fun way to pull a lot of people into the Sustainable Connecticut program. And I'm excited, I'm, you know, I was thinking that we could pull in the schools and a lot of other groups in town once, once we get going.
Yes, that'd be great.
Um, so this is June. So my only comment is, is that, you know, as life has changed as dramatically as it has, I know that I've looked at the sale of seeds and garden equipment has really gone up. People are more focusing more on their yards. And I know a lot of the local nurseries, the ones that we have right here in town are open. I mean, they are practicing safe distancing, either curbside pickup, or, you know, one or two people allowed in the greenhouses at a time. But they have, they have like all of their, they're like their pollinator plants spread throughout the nurseries. So I was thinking it might be a good idea if we can ask them to identify with like a separate little card or note saying, "These are pollinator pathway plants," if you want to already buy something that's already established. So-
That's a great idea.
They, I mean, they have butterfly plants in different places, but they, but they do have them spread through. I've been to a couple of them, so I know how they're working. So, but I think if we can ask them to like join in and really identify the true pollinator pathway plants, if somebody wants to buy something that's already established, then they can.
That's a great idea, we'll definitely do that, thank you.
Okay.
I thought we could all use a little cheerful news for a change.
Oh, yeah, right, so...
All right, great, thank you, guys. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. I don't know if anyone's on, wants to make any comment? All right, if not, now on to comments from you guys. Dev, do you want to kick off, if you have anything?
Um, sure, I have two comments, and they're actually just totally related. And the first one is just, again, just thanking so many people in the town. It even begins to thank these people. Every day, I see somebody else that's doing something to help their neighbors. I was excited to see that, you know, the public schools have their maintenance people in, helping with the town buildings. The public school food service workers who are still out there, all those people making literally hundreds of masks for people. The beautification committee that went out there and put out the planters and the flowers. All those involved in the Stonington Feeds Stonington and the ripple in the water. And, I mean, every day I see something else, and I'm just so proud of all of them. And it kind of ties into my second comment is, you know, I want to thank all the people who send me notes and emails with comments and suggestions. And this week, I did get a message from one person who was talking exactly about that. How many people are stepping up, people who really don't involve, or don't want any accolades, or aren't expecting any kind of thanks. But she was wondering if we might be able to consider some types of recognition, or nominations, or certificate, or celebration, or something, once this is all over, to kind of recognize people.
Dev, that's an awesome idea.
I thought that was a great idea, though. Just something to start thinking about. I mean, right now, no answers, but-
No, that's so funny. I got a similar email from someone a while back, actually asking like, we should have kind of like the Rotary Service Above Self sort of awards, and just, you know, talking about a few people that had stood out to them. And I think, I love the idea of like a nomination one, where people nominate people, and then, yeah, I think that could be great.
Okay, well, I figured it's something we can kind of start thinking about, and, you know, and I got back to this person and said, "Please, you know, continue to brainstorm and share ideas." Because I thought it was just a fun way to get started, to think about something that'll be a nice kind of recognition and celebration.
That's awesome, thank you. Thank you, and yeah, thank you, right. So June, anything from you?
So K312, we are going to have a test run right after this meeting to see if we can, to see if we can figure out how to do a WebEx on our own. And the meeting is tentatively scheduled for next week, but just to, just to wrap up stuff. So the key things we're going to focus on is just, you know, paying our invoices. There aren't very many, but, and then making sure that the punch list that we had, since the schools are unoccupied right now, that those punch lists are getting done. So, I'll let you know how we do, because we're supposed to go on to test run in a couple of minutes here, so...
Oh, great.
We'll definitely do that, because Butler's is trying to do the same thing, so-
Yeah.
Same meeting.
Right.
Yeah, it's tricky. We're trying to get planning and zoning going, the Board of Assessment Appeals, and maybe the boathouse. So yeah, there's no shortage. I think WPCA might be trying to, so, yeah, it's, there's a lot of training. Um, no, so, June, anything?
Looking, again, looking for someone we can meet in person, whether it's masks and gloves or whatever, but just to have that more free-flowing communication.
Yeah, it would be so nice.
Yeah.
Anything else on your end, June?
No, that's it.
All right. I have just a couple of quick updates they wanted to share, and kind of building on Dev's comments about the people in the community that have really just been stepping up and amazing. And one of them is this organization, the acronym is SHARE. And they created a website, basically StoningtonHelps.com or .org, whichever you prefer. And just to kind of plug it, they, within like two days of kind of launching it, 30 people volunteered to sign up to help, which is amazing. And then on the other side, the only one person so far has signed up to be a recipient. So we really would like to help, you know, if you guys, I can reshare the flyer with both of you and anyone who might be listening or on the call, that we really want to be sure people understand, especially over the next few weeks, you know, it'd be great if more people would sign up to get a, say, grocery delivery or errand delivery, because then it's, you know, one person going out and doing shopping for a few people instead of all those people being out. Also, to be sure people know it's not just for seniors, it could also be a parent who, you know, is home with their children and doesn't have someone else to watch the kids, and obviously doesn't want to bring them to the grocery store. So it could be for a lot of different people, for different options. And so we'd love to see if we can get the word out and people to know, you know, they're, they're really encouraged to sign up. We have a lot of volunteers who are looking forward to helping and kind of doing their part. So if you know of anybody that might be interested, just have them, you know, they can sign up. There's a quick link where you can sign up, or even a phone number to call. And that's just been an amazing group of volunteers just helping on it. Part of that is also the mask-making group, and they've been really fantastic. There's a few different groups in town working on it. Just for people to know, we still have a bin outside of Town Hall. We repurposed a recycling bin to collect masks. But each week, we're getting, I don't know, I'd say anywhere from 25 to 100 masks being dropped off. And it's just so wonderful, and they're, they're going out to different people in the community who've requested them. So that's been really, really, really appreciated. The only other thing, just on Stonington Feeds Stonington, again, is so heartwarming. They've surpassed- They've surpassed twenty-one thousand dollars raised. Um most of that through different donations from different residents, but also even some of the businesses that they've reached out to to purchase the gift cards to kind of help them during this difficult time. They've turned around and like done matches or done their own donations, and it just isn't really heartwarming. And just to say, in the New York Times article that came out yesterday, they even mentioned Stonington Feeds Stonington. And I think it just shows, you know, it is a core part of our community, just kind of helping each other and, and kind of coming together in times of need. So that was just really heartwarming. And I guess the final thing is, we're just trying to finalize our, our budget. Um we've been working with the, with Alexa, um the Chair of the Board of Ed, as well as Farukh, who leads up the Finance Subcommittee. And I know they've been working really closely with um the Superintendent of Schools and the Director of Finance. And Jim, our director, has been working with their director. So everybody's trying really hard to finalize both savings for this year as well as cuts for next year. Um and so we're ba, I'm basically trying to put together um a recommendation sheet to the Board of Finance to consider for their final deliberation. Um and kind of a range of, you know, if we want to have a totally flat mill rate to if we need to actually decline the mill rate. And then that'll obviously be up to the Board of Finance. But um but just to reassure people who are concerned about taxes, um I think what we're all working off the baseline of is at, you know, most likely is a flat mill rate. So the mill rate shouldn't be going up, but again, all that will be decided next week at the Board of Finance meeting. Um and just also, yeah, I think those are my big things. So any, anything else, guys? Oh, the census, of course, the census. Um if you have ideas for how else we can be promoting the census. We had a great call with the Lieutenant Governor yesterday and a few other um towns and representatives across the state. People had kind of different creative ideas. Um our town clerk had the idea of putting notes out with um the dog licenses. You can also put messages out with the tax bills. Um we've been doing a decent bit on social media, we could probably do more. But if you have other ideas for how we can get um the word out, I think Stonington right now is at basically a little over fifty-two percent of people have filled it out, so we have, we have further to go. We can keep improving. Um some towns around us.
How many people have filled it out?
Fifty-two percent.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, fifty-two percent. I thought, I thought I heard fifty-two people.
Oh, you'd be really fairly.
Okay, fifty-two percent.
Yeah, fifty-two percent. Um so yeah, if you know anybody or if you haven't filled it out yet, or if you can just encourage people or if you have ideas about how we can get the word out to people, um you know, if they can save access to online, it's a really quick. Um I, I did it, it took me about five minutes. Um or they either, you know, they can mail it in, there's other things. But just to reiterate to people how important it is for our federal dollars and um, and other things. So that was my other update.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Alright, guys, well, can't wait to see you in person again one day.
Same, same here.
Alright, so we will.
And I'm asso, I'm assuming after the Board of Finance does their final deliberation, then we'll, we'll have a special meeting. It's gonna let us know when, right?
Yep, hopefully it'll, it'll be anywhere from a week to two weeks after that, because we'll just have to notice it in the paper. But um Stacy will reach out to all of us to figure out a date.
Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna adjourn. Thank you.
Okay, take care. Alright, bye-bye.